I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Board of Supervisors for April nineteenth, twenty-fourth, but allegiance be led by Supervisor Turner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yes. If we remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Supervisor Dickison. Thank you. Hey, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Conover.
Here.
Mr. Mayday.
Here.
Mr. Diamond.
Here.
Ms. Gilligan.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mr. Patchett.
Here.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Mr. Bean.
Here.
Mr. Crescito.
Here.
Mr. Merlino.
Yeah.
Mr. Straugh.
Yeah.
Mr. Wild.
Here.
Mr. McGowan. Mr. Strainer.
Here.
Mr. Eto'o.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Runyon.
Here.
Chairman Garrity.
Here.
Form is established.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approve the March fifteenth Board Meeting Subject Correction by the Clerk. Motion by Supervisor Driscoll, second by Supervisor Bean. Any discussion? All those favor? Signify by saying aye. Next, I'd like to ask that the District Attorney Jason Carason and Public Defender Gray Canali get up and talk to us a little bit about Law Day coming up.
Chairman Garrity, Honorable Supervisors. This morning, a proclamation recognizing Law Day will be up for your vote. I have no doubt this proclamation will pass unanimously. Jason Carason, our Warren County District Attorney, and myself as public defender seek the privilege of the floor today to briefly express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to this honorable board for its unwavering support of our departments and your continuous recognition of the vital role the rule of law plays in the three branches of government's effort to perfect what is the bedrock of our freedom, what Justice Brandeis referred to as ordered liberty. This board, as the center of local government, holds true to the premise, not only deduced from our written constitution, but from the history of our people, and ultimately from sound moral judgment, that government serves not only our immediate basic and material needs, but also our enduring values. This, in part, is what is meant by government by law. Our assistant district attorneys and assistant public defenders meet on the battlefield of courts throughout our county each day, each vigorously advocating for their own version of laws and justice. The civility and mutual respect that we show each other derived from our shared values enshrined in the Constitution and our mutually acknowledgement of one simple truth: We each play an equally vital role in our system of ordered liberty. Again, in honor of Law Day, we both would like to thank you, this board, for your continuous and unwavering support of our departments and the vital role we each play in the defense and preservation of the rule of law. Thank you.
Great job, Greg. Greg contacted me earlier this week and said, I think we should go up and say something. And I said, I don't know if anyone's going to want to hear it, so let's keep it brief. But Greg, as you can hear, always has kind of thoughtful words when it comes to the law. And what I wanted to do is first express my thanks as well. As you know, criminal justice has changed a lot in the last few years. It's put a lot of demands on our offices and on counties like our county, and it doesn't work without the support of these groups. And I thought what I'd do is share a brief story. Greg talked about civility. And if I'm wrong on this story, I'm going to ask Greg not to tell us now, but when we leave. But years ago, it has to be maybe twenty-seven, twenty-eight years ago, I was, I think I was arguing an appeal with Greg down in Albany. We were on other sides. And while afterwards or beforehand, we're talking, and I said, hey, you know, someone wants me to do a bankruptcy, but I guess I'm supposed to be admitted in the federal system, and I don't think I am yet. And he says, well, did anyone ever bring you before a federal judge to do something? And I said, no. He goes, I'll do it after we argue our appeal. I'll take you. So we argued the appeal. And then he walked me to some courtroom. They found a judge, a federal judge, and he says, in only the way Greg can, you know, he says, Your Honor, this fine young man, Mr. Carason, will make excellent, you know, saying my praises way beyond what he should have. And I became able to practice in the federal system. That, like I said, that's about twenty-seven years ago. So we go back that far in our legal careers. Greg's even longer than that. And that civility is what really helps to have that system work well. We've been on opposite sides before he was a public defender, and yet we're able to work well together. And I think that longstanding relationship with people helps keep our systems working well, and it makes things, I believe, as fair as possible. So again, thank you very much for hearing about Law Day a little bit. And now maybe you know a little bit more about Greg and what a nice guy he can be sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be privilege of the floor and public comment. The only thing I ask is that when you come up to speak, please give your name and where you live and limit your comments. Hopefully, three minutes. So thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me.
You want to pull the mic down?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Heidi Shemp. I'm from Elderwood at North Creek. I live in Indian Lake, but I am from Lake George, born and raised. I'm here today because Elderwood is at risk foreclosure. I'm sure a lot of you have heard about it. In 2018, Elderwood took over for Adirondack Tri-County, which was a nursing home in North Creek, and they were going to close. We put a lot of things in place to make improvements, but COVID killed us. It was really hard. In 2022, we applied for and received a VAP grant. We applied for a multi-year transformation grant. We received only one year. And that despite having met and exceeded most of our goals. So we went from a two-star facility to a four-star facility. We achieved ninety-two percent occupancy, and the state average is about eighty-three percent. I've, we employ a hundred people year-round, and they're mostly about eighty percent Warren County residents. In the last four months, I've hired at least thirty-something people. We were high with agency staffing. We didn't anticipate it, but we actually converted ninety percent of our agency nursing staff to our own staff, which is huge. We are low on our census right now because of a voluntary decision not to admit residents because of the situation. And it's a good decision until we know more. And basically, we shouldn't close. There's ninety-two million dollars sitting at the state from the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, specifically earmarked for VAP, and we are a vital access provider. Losing a hundred employees out of the North Creek area would be devastating for the community. Losing our services would be devastating. We take around thirty admissions a month from Glens Falls Hospital alone. Over eighty percent of our residents are Warren County residents. So any support that we could get would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address the board? Think nobody to wish to address the board on public comment. We'll move on to public hearing. We have a public hearing on Local Law Number Two of 2024, and I'll ask the clerk to read the information.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering the adoption of proposed Local Law Number Two for the year 2024 entitled "A Local Law to Consolidate the Department of Human Resources and the Department of Civil Service Administrations and Its Functions in the County of Warren into a Single Department of Human Resources and Repealing and Replacing Local Law Number Five of 2015." Local Law Number Two of 2024 repeals and replaces Local Law Number Five of 2015 and acts to consolidate the Department of Human Resources and Department of Civil Service Administration and its functions in the County of Warren into a single Department of Human Resources. The local law sets forth the respective powers and duties of the county human resources director. Notice is further given that pursuant to Resolution Number Ninety-five of twenty-four, adopted by the Board of Supervisors on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, Route Nine, Queensbury, New York, on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at ten a.m., at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law will be heard concerning same. A copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, now you've heard the information about Local Law Number Two of 2024. I'll open up any public comment. Anybody who wish to comment on Local Law Number Two, please come up to the podium and state your name. Okay, anybody from the board wish to comment on Local Law Number Two? Seeing them, I'll leave that open for a minute. This other local law piggybacks on Local Law Number Two, I believe. So I'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing on Local Law Number Three of 2024.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering the adoption of a proposed Local Law Number Three for the year 2024 entitled "A Local Law Amending Local Law Number One of 2024: A Local Law Fixing the Salaries of Certain County Officers and Employees of Warren County to Remove and Replace the Title of Personnel Officer with the Title of Director of Human Resources." Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at ten a.m. in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, thirteen forty, Route Nine, Queensbury, New York, at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law will be heard concerning same. A copy of the local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, so I'll open that public hearing on Local Law Number Three of 2024. And does anybody wish to speak on Local Law Number Three of 2024? No one? Does anybody wish to speak on Local Law Number Two? Then I'll make, declare Local Law Number Two closed. And one last chance, Local Law Number Three. Any comments? And I'll declare the local law, or the public hearing on both those local laws closed. Okay, now we'll go to report of committee and chairman. My report, obviously, May fifteenth, I attended the last Board of Supervisors. On the nineteenth of March, I attended committee meetings, which included Criminal Justice, Public Safety, Health Services Committee, Human Services, Tourism and Acuity Tax Committee. On the twentieth, I attended county facilities, public works, environmental concerns, and economic growth committee meetings. I also attended an AATV meeting held in Warrensburg. And AATV stands Association of Towns in the Adirondacks. On March twenty-first, I attended the annual LDC meeting held here at the Municipal Center. And then the twenty-fifth through the fourth, I took a little vacation, some of the time at One Hundred Park Street, I believe, down there in the city. But I'm out now and doing better. On the ninth, I attended the wait for Supervisor Dickison, and I want to thank everybody who attended. And we had a very good turnout from the Board of Supervisors. Dennis was a friend to all of us, and he's certainly going to be missed. And we welcome Vinny to take his place. And Vinny's been Dennis's sidekick for quite a while up there in town, Lake George. So welcome, Vinny Crescito.
Thank you.
The spot at the supervisor at town of Lake George.
Thank you.
On the sixteenth, we had a personnel and personnel meeting on the sixteenth. And then I almost missed this when I was doing my short report last night is April eighth, I along with probably most everybody in this room enjoyed the total eclipse that we were able to see from our porches or wherever you decided to go. I thought, you know, I didn't really think much about it when it first came out, but sitting on my porch, looking through a pair of glasses, it was pretty neat. And I think it's once in a lifetime, maybe for some of us, maybe some folks will see it again, but I thought it was pretty good. I think Warren County handled it the best it can. I only had one email sent to my town, and somebody complained about sitting in Warrensburg for a couple hours, trying to get out of town, because it seems like GPS must tell people, Eddie, route going south, take it. So they were on the Skim River Road going south, they were on Route Nine going south, they were on Water Street going south, they were on River Street going south, and they all seemed to get there at the same time. I do know the traffic never cleared Warrensburg until after midnight going south. But I did respond to the gentleman. I had to go out that night. It was one of the few nights I went out. I don't know why, I craved ice cream. So I made it to Stewart's. I gave up on them because every stool and every parking lot was filled. So I zipped up street. I went to Grand Union, which wasn't much business in the Grand Union. I grabbed my little bit of ice cream, and I headed home, taking the back way. I come up over Prospect Street, and I come down to, which is a block away from I live. And needless to say, I sat there for twenty minutes to go from less than a city block, for sure, because to get up to where I live, so I get home. So I shared this with the gentleman. I think he was a little bit amused by it, but traffic was really something. And I think we were fortunate that we were able to observe so much of the eclipse. So that's my report for last month. And we'll go on. And Supervisor Turner, do you want to start with any reports?
I don't have a, you know, a report, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to invite everybody here to attend Earth Day tomorrow in Glens Falls. It is in City Park from eleven a.m. to two p.m., and the celebration is going to embrace the theme of sustainable futures. And it's going to, what they want to educate and inspire residents to embrace a healthier and environmentally responsible lifestyle. We're also going to be, have a special guest, speaker coming, a nationally well-known speaker, Tony Bootner. I may be saying that incorrectly. I'm sorry. He is, he and his brother have worked for years on the Blue Zone projects. So he would be an interesting speaker to listen to if you're interested in living over a hundred years old. That's what Blue Zones projects are. And he will be at the Charleswood Theater tomorrow, six o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bruno.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, excuse me, I'm sorry. County facilities met at nine a.m. on March twentieth, twenty-two. You have in your assortment of resolutions, number one fourteen through one eighteen, county facilities, they're pretty straightforward. Take a look at them. Really mundane. And I hope that you can support them. Our next meeting is Friday, April twenty-sixth at nine a.m. And that's my report.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Chairman. The Human Services Committee met on March nineteenth, Tuesday. From that come three resolutions, one twenty-five, one twenty-six, and one twenty-seven. They all relate to the County Youth Bureau. Two of the resolutions, one twenty-six and one twenty-seven, involve the disbursement of your funds to municipalities and some other area not-for-profit organizations. I would ask for your support of that. I also would like to get Supervisor Wild's permission, we spoke earlier, to encourage you to support Resolution one thirty-five, which relates to the creating and deletion of six different positions, actually, three individuals, three positions, three creations, three deletions. That represents maybe about a six thousand dollar savings to the county. But more important than that, I think it speaks to the fact that our departments are always looking to improve efficiency, to make best use of county dollars. And I think this is an example in the, at DSS where they've done that. So I would encourage your support of those. The next, the first day of committee meetings is Tuesday, April twenty-third. There will not be any agenda for human services. Also, Cornell Cooperative Extension, John Bo, the director, has brought, as he does every month, a program update. Cooperative Extension will be meeting this Monday evening at six o'clock up in Warrensburg for their monthly meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Pageant.
No report.
Supervisor Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Criminal Justice, Public Safety, and Emergency Services Committee met on March nineteenth. As a result, before you have for consideration, Resolutions one nineteen and one twenty, our next meeting is next Tuesday, the twenty-third, at nine a.m. Also, in the absence of Supervisor Dickinson, I was proud to chair the Environmental Concerns and Real Property Taxes meeting. Before you have Resolutions one twenty-one and one twenty-two, they both are in regards to property auctions as a result of foreclosure. So we look for your support of that. And I extend my thanks to our Director of Real Property Services, Lexi, for all the work that she does in preparation. There's an awful lot of work that goes into this foreclosure list. It's a year-round endeavor. So Lexi, thank you very much. Thank you.
Supervisor Bean.
No report.
And again, welcome Supervisor Crescito.
No report. I'd like to comment.
Sure.
You know, as we all know, April third was a sad day for us all. It's the day we lost Supervisor. But I had the privilege of being his deputy for the last twelve years. I can't say today's not a bittersweet day for me. It really is. I wish it wasn't, didn't turn out this way. I wish it was a little different. But Dennis was a part of the fabric of Lake George. I knew him for over forty years. We worked great together. He was a great supervisor, but you know, more importantly, he was a great friend to everybody, to the county, to the community. So in his place, I'm going to do the best I can. And thank you, everyone, for the nice welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Merlino.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, I'd like to thank Vinny for joining us. I know Vinny also a lot of years. I served next to Dennis for almost ten years, and he was just a dedicated person, sometimes hard to listen to, and sometimes listen to his comments. But he was a dedicated person to his town and to this board. And I have privilege to have known him also this long. With that said, on the tourism, we have two resolutions, one thirty. This is to, we approved the tax committee meeting to improve the Improv Records, Special Olympics, and those are on your agenda. Also, one thirty-one, we also have a resolution authorizing agreement with the Root Rock Marketing. They're going to help us with our computers and get us out on our new website. They're a great organization. And one last one is one thirty-two. That's a resolution with bringing Granice aboard. They will help register all short-term rentals in Warren County. The next, the next meeting was this Tuesday, five texts and tourism. Thank you.
I just want to add that I, along with everyone else here, will miss the honorable Dennis Dickinson, a man of honesty, integrity.
Up by saying, well, we had that IT situation that we're going to miss. I'm going to miss along with everyone else here, the honorable Dennis Dickinson, a man of honesty, a man of integrity. And I'm also glad to see Vinny join us, because I see Vinny in the same manner as I see Dennis. And I've worked with Vinny on many other occasions over the past years. And so I think that Lake George, Tom Lord, did a good job in appointing him. So welcome, Vinny.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Supervisor Wild.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo the comments, but I won't repeat them with the gentleman to my left. I've known Vinny shortly, but I'm sure he'll do a great job. And Dennis, God bless his soul, I'm going to have something to talk about later, and I'm sure he's going to be talking to me as I'm going through a little presentation later to something that I think we should all see. On the twenty-ninth, Personnel Met, there are a number of resolutions in front of you today, one thirty-three to one thirty-eight, one thirty-three through four, five, six, and part of thirty-five are related to our reorganization of the Human Services and Civil Services positions. And I appreciate your support. One thirty-seven is the IT shared services that our county IT department will provide services to the towns as necessary. And one thirty-eight is a resolution to support adding members to the Board of SUNY Adirondack. On the sixteenth, Personnel also met, there is a settlement offer that we have, and I think we'll probably have a discussion a little bit later from the county attorney. But that is something that is something on the agenda, and my hope is that we get, you know, some support to move forward with that. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Supervisor Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health Services met on the nineteenth of March. We had a nice presentation from our director, Deanna Parks. She went over all the different things that you can call to find out information for Office of the Aging. She was very informative, little lengthy, but she did very well. From though, from that came two resolutions, one twenty-three, which authorizes amendment to expand in-home services, and Resolution Number one twenty-four, to help people find more awareness to the programs that we have at the Office of the Aging. I too would also like to thank your welcome, Vinny. I've known Vinny for quite a while. He should be a wonderful addition. And on that, that's it.
Supervisor Eto'o.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On March twentieth, the Economic Growth and Development Committee met. We have one resolution before you today, which is nested in one thirteen. It just very simply proposes to amend revenue budget codes to reflect some ARPA funding. We are scheduled to meet again on April twenty-sixth. Couple of things I wanted to bring up about our committee. At that April twenty-sixth meeting, I've asked our county planning department to give an update to supervisors on the comprehensive plan and its status, and also the housing strategy. About halfway done right now with La Bella. Kudos to Ethan and Sarah and their team for steadily juggling dozens of projects they have in the hopper on any given month. I also wanted to highlight Liza and her team at the Workforce Development Department. Specifically this month, they've gone through at least four job fairs. April tenth, supporting SUNY Adirondack with their job fair. Liza is right there, right when you walk in, providing resources for these emerging professionals. The very next day, planning and effectuating a massive job fair at Glens Falls High School. Administrator Tafflin was there. Industry speakers in different rooms that the kids would rotate through, keynote speaker, dozens of employers in the gym. Two days ago, at the Lake George Junior Senior High School, same thing organized by her department. And then I believe she's supporting SUNY Adirondack again for another And then I believe she's supporting SUNY Adirondack again for another job fair for their culinary and hospitality event that they're holding at their downtown student-run seasoned restaurant later this month. Employers everywhere at these events put on perfectly. The passion that lies on her team exhibit every month when, when tackling some of our biggest challenges is worthy of praise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Also, I remind the supervisors that there are, there are jobs available through employment and training for, for summer students to go to work at different areas across the county. And I would suggest that, you know, that if anybody could use a summer intern in certain positions, please reach out to the, the office and get your applications in. Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Vinnie.
Thank you.
I miss Dennis. He was always good, bring us a smile, and he'll be missed. On March 29th, the Finance and Budget Committee met. There's several resolutions in your packet, 112 and 113. The first is supplemental appropriations. There's one for public health. 113 is amending the 2024 budget. Looks like there's about eight departments that are adding money, revenue and appropriations to their budget. 139 will authorize the Chair of the Board to execute contracts with vendors and contractors with department head approval for an amount up to $10,000 annually per year. There are five stipulations within the resolution for the department heads. And for this to take place, it also amends Warren County's purchasing policy as to the effects. 140 transfers funds remaining in the Civil Service Department to the Human Resources Budget Codes due to consolidating the two departments. 141 establishes Capital Project H430 Culvert Repairs, and it transfers $4,100,000 from serial bonds into that capital project. 142 will authorize appropriation of $800,000 of general fund balance to, to the capital projects transfer code and authorizes reimbursement of $600,000 from occupancy tax reserve to the general fund balance at $200,000 per year for the years 2025, 26 and 27. This is for funding of H424 Joseph Warren Capital Project for the Joseph Warren Center for Leadership and History. 143 will appropriate $200,000 from the occupancy tax reserve this year into H424, the Joseph Warren Capital Project. 144 transfers $1 million from the two resolutions above from A9950, the transfer code into H424. 145 through 148 is awarding bids to the Joseph Warren Project. Under what's law, there are four separate bids. 145 is plumbing. 146 is electrical. 147 is general contractor. And 148 is mechanical. And the last one is 149, and that will appropriate $120,000 from occupancy tax reserve to tourism special events to cover the cost of funding approved in this year, 2024. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Supervisor Runyon?
No report.
Supervisor Conover?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works met on 20th of March, represented in your packet by two resolutions. The first is an award of, of contracts. All members should have the canvas, the bid canvas on their desk with the low bidders highlighted in bold, fairly straightforward. And Resolution 129 is apply for a grant to sort of water of $1,000 to help support the costs of our Spring Z. And next concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Mayday?
No report.
Supervisor Diamond?
No reports.
Supervisor Gilligan?
No report, but we just want to invite everyone down to Wingfest in downtown Glen's Falls City Park on April 27th from 12 to 3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report of Administrator?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I apologize, it was a busy month, so this is a little bit lengthy. I was going to skip the first item, but in light of this morning, I'll talk about it on the 18th of March. Amanda Mike Colvin and I visited Washington County Boardroom. We're still looking at a better way to configure our boardroom and also to upgrade our video and audio capabilities in a cost-effective manner. As you see, we have periodic audio issues. We have comments from people who try to listen. Sometimes they can't hear. So we're looking at better ways to, to enhance our capabilities in that regard. I'll skip some of the meetings. On 19 March, I met with Bob Landry, Dan Bruno and Darren Scott, who's the Eastern New York Director for the Development of the New York State Department of Housing and Community Renewal. And we talked about our housing challenges. And Darren's sharing a lot of information with me on successful housing initiatives across the state. As you know, housing is a difficult issue. It's being addressed by a lot of our economic development organizations. It's being addressed by the Regional Planning Board, by a lot of the towns. We have an 800-page housing study we've done. Nate mentioned our strat, our housing implementation strategy that's ongoing. It's going to be also part of our comprehensive plan. So everyone is looking toward, looking for ways to address our housing shortage. And it's going to be exacerbated over the next five years. And that's what we're most concerned with. So we'll keep you posted on that. 20th of March, Liza Ochsendorf and I met with Bob Henke, Dave O'Brien, and County Administrator Melissa Fitch of Warren, of Washington County to discuss ways we can partner with Washington County and assist with their workforce development effort. Nate highlighted her, Liza's a great asset to Warren County and provides exceptional ideas to them and has great ideas for Warren County. 20th of March, attended SUNY Adirondack Partnership for Community Belonging. It brings together 60 local leaders representing the healthcare, business, education, religious LGBTQ+, local government, law enforcement, human services and nonprofit communities together. And the discussion focused on the urgent need to support, encourage and develop young people in our community as they navigate life's challenges in the post-COVID environment. And this is another issue that's getting a lot of attention lately from a lot of our public nonprofit organizations and people all across the Warren County community. 21st of March, met with Julie Garcia, our assigned counsel discussion, to discuss options for the assigned counsel office. As you know, Julie will depart Washington, Warren County in the summer. We decided the best approach is to continue with an attorney as the assigned counsel administrator, as recommended by Indigent Legal Services at New York State. They provide most of the funding for the office. We have an ad that closes today. Applicants, only a couple so far, so we'll see what happens. If we don't get qualified applicants, we'll reconvene and, and talk about other options for our assigned counsel office. On the 22nd of March, Supervisors Thomas Wild and I met with Dr. Duffy and Anne Marie Scheider at SUNY Adirondack. SUNY Adirondack is requesting support for a capital project to replace the original high voltage electrical infrastructure that serves the south end of the campus from Washington Hall to the gymnasium. They have a significant amount, a number of power outages recently, and they believe that needs to be replaced. It's urgent. And replacing this will be, it's critical and will prevent many of the power outages that have been happening over the past two years. Equipment has a long lead time and would likely be replaced in 2026. Capital project cost is about $2 million. It's split between Washington County and Warren County. Washington County is expected at their board meeting today to approve a resolution funding their share of the project, which will be about $600,000. The rest we'll discuss at our next Personnel and Higher Education Committee meeting. 22nd of March, met with Chuck Barton of the IDA. As you know, I'm on the IDA now. He provided a rundown of current projects, prospective projects and discussions of future projects. IDA has a lot on the plate right now. 25th of March, our friends from Saga City visited Wash, Warren County. Great discussion by Supervisor Strau and our district attorney. Appreciate that. We always enjoy our interaction with the youth from Saga City. 25th of March, we had a comp plan meeting, public meeting at Warrensburg Fire Station. It was well-attended by the Public Project Advisory Group and also Warren County citizens. We're moving into the second phase of the comp plan. And our contractor, Labella, and our planning department are going to provide a comprehensive update on where we are at the next meeting of the Economic Growth and Development Committee. Occupancy tax, we've talked about that. 26th of March, we held our annual workplace violence meeting where we discuss workplace violence incidents that impact our employees, primarily in the Department of Social Services. We discussed better ways to address some of the issues that continue to occur with clients. 27th of March, Glen's Falls Victory Parade. No one's mentioned that yet from Glen's Falls, so I'll mention it. And it was to honor the state championship boys' basketball team, but they also honored other teams who've had great success in their respective sports. And it's pretty impressive to stand in the Glen's Falls gym and look at all the championship banners that are hung there. So congratulations to them. 2nd of April, I met with Andrea Deep of Ascend Mental Wellness, who were previously known as Warren Washington Association for Mental Health. They're recognizing the Warren County Board of Supervisors with their Dorothea Dix Community Service Award for support, for our support in promoting mental wellness in Warren County. Ascend is inviting members of the Board of Supervisors to a reception at Heritage Hall on Thursday, May 9th from 4 to 5 PM. Amanda has been collecting reservations for that. It's free of charge to Board of Supervisors who would like to attend. And please let her know by the end of the day because we have to submit the number who are going today. On the 8th of April, so everyone's talked a little bit about this. I think I told you we were going to assemble the Avengers for the, for the eclipse, and we did. So you, I just want to recognize our first responders across the county, the Sheriff's Department, Emergency Services, DPW, and our New York State partners. If you drove by the front of the municipal center, it looked the same as it always did. But behind the municipal center, there were about 30 vehicles from organizations all across this area who were poised to respond to anything that occurred during the eclipse. And, and it was, we had an increase in vehicle accidents, and we had an increase in other vehicle incidents. But it was only a slight increase from last, from what it was the same day last year. So they handled it pretty well, and except for the traffic that the chairman mentioned that didn't clear out till about midnight, we didn't have any real significant incidents. I was glad that Batman wasn't called out so he could sit around and watch the eclipse instead of having to participate.
Can I ask one question? Did you wear your welding helmet?
Uh, yeah, I did.
9th of April, Board of Supervisors and Chairman Garrity has talked, and we've all talked about Dennis Dickinson, so we will all miss him. 10th of April, second quarter department head meeting where we see presentations for, from Janelle Jones in Health Services and Ethan Gaddy on the comprehensive plan. The meeting was followed by a farewell to Trish Ninderger, who retired today. 11th of April, we had our Warren County Regional Forensic Center meeting with DPW, that's commonly known as a county morgue. County coroner's Dr. Sikarika, our ME, was there. We're preparing for our presentation. On the 25th of April, we'll do a presentation to the inter-county meeting that we're hosting here at Warren County, to the other counties in the area to discuss how we'll partner together on the forensic center. Supervisor Eto did a great job covering the Black Bear Career Expo, so I won't mention that. 17th of April, met with Supervisor Strau and Mark Donahue to discuss the Adirondack Balloon Festival, which, which is rapidly approaching again. And the town of Queensberry will begin hosting balloon festival meetings in May. Get tired of reading too. So I'd like to highlight one thing, our planning and GIS department. I appreciate your support for our reorganization of planning and GIS. They will be full strength in June with a group of people that are just outstanding and are coming to me every day with new ideas. One of their latest ideas I'd like to highlight, a lot of you know, if you ride the bike trail, there are a lot of memorials along the bike trail. The bike trail, mostly you know this too, probably used to be a military road. And there are, there were a lot of things that happened, particularly during, and mostly during the French and Indian War. And there are a lot of memorials out there. Some are not easily accessible. There's a Colonel Williams Memorial, Williams College is named after him. It sits, it's a great memorial in the middle of the, off the bike trail and off Route 9. You can't really get to it. Well, we're going to work with DPW and Parks and see if we can maybe create a better way to get into some of these memorials so everyone can see them. Bloody Pond is another one that you can't get to. There was a major issue there, a major battle there during the French and Indian Wars. And, and so they're going to do a letterbox. If you're not familiar with our letterbox program that we have, it's widely, it's really a great program that GIS and planning have done. They're going to do a letterbox trail along the bike trail and point out all these memorials that are along the road for primarily, again, the French and Indian War. But we're looking at this as for the 250th anniversary. It's really the revolutionary era. French and Indian War went right into the revolution, and we think that'll be a great thing to do. So I, keep your eye on the planning department and the GIS department. They're going to do great things. Employee anniversary dates, I have a lot of them this month. The first one I like to mention, the first hire I made as the county administrator, Heather Bagshaw, one year today. So I feel like an old timer now. Donald Volpus from DPW, 20 years. Frank Lehman's DPW, 20 years. Christopher Slater, Sheriff, 20 years. Alan Son, Sheriff, 20 years. Neil Mason, Sheriff, 20 years. Daniel Kelly, Sheriff, 20 years. Matthew Hubbard, Sheriff, 20 years. Matthew Harrington, Sheriff, 20 years. Kevin Gertler, Sheriff, 20 years. Michael Gordon, Sheriff, 20 years. Jason Eldridge, Sheriff, 20 years. Catherine Coat, Sheriff, 20 years. Trish Ninderger, who retired today, 21 years. Diane Caldwell, Public Health, 23 years. Ron Dixon, who's retiring this month, Real Property, 24 years. John Miller, DPW, 24 years. Allison McLennahan, Public Records, 24 years. Crystal Hart, Braves, Social Services, 24 years. Michael Colvin, IT, 26 years. Susan Campbell, Sheriff, 38 years. And Brian Engel, Sheriff, 38 years. So thanks to all those employees. And I'd like to close with a reading from The Marvelous Adventures of Countyland that's just been released. In the, oh, start with the first one. Marvelous counties will explore with public officials we all adore. Each one special, tailored to soar. Adventures await with wonders galore. In the boardroom so grand, the county board a stellar band. Beat as a routine, think and debate, budgeting to invest, what plans to create. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. County Attorney?
Thank you. Good morning. And unfortunately, supervisors, the cartoons in the book are even better than the prose. I'm going to start with just a quick update. I previously addressed a new lawsuit that we were served with, which is the Cynthia Rich versus Warren County. It's the tax foreclosure surplus lawsuit that was filed in the Northern District of New York. We received notice last week along with all other defendants in multiple other actions that the plaintiff is looking to consolidate all of the lawsuits against all of the counties across multiple federal districts into one multi-district litigation. Sometimes that's referred to as a class action. And that our office will review that filing. And that our office will review that filing that just came in this past week and will advise the Personnel Committee on what steps we believe is in the best interest of Warren County regarding that multi, what is potentially going to be a multi-district litigation against multiple counties. Second, we, as far as notices of claim, we received a one new notice of claim. It was March eleventh, twenty twenty four. It was actually from an Irene Esposito. And it was an amended or an updated notice of claim to one that we had received about two months earlier. And it has to do with a slip and fall that occurred during the Ice Castles event at the fairgrounds. Third, the county was served with a new federal lawsuit. The plaintiff is Nicholas Otakirk. It's alleged against a Sergeant Thomas and a Correctional Officer Crum. It's a civil rights lawsuit. The plaintiff is pro se, meaning he's representing himself. And the two Sheriff Office Corrections employees who are named are covered under Section eighteen of the Public Officers Law for purposes of a defense and indemnification and have in fact requested that from the county and will be proceeding. That has been presented to the insurance carrier for coverage and it has been accepted at this point. So we'll aid and assist in the defense of that matter as it moves forward. For a more detailed report, I've provided a more detailed report at the Personnel Committee and will do so again for this month. There's one matter before I ask for an executive session, I'm going to give a quick reference to it. And if any board members believe they need to have an executive session, please let me know. And then I would ask for that executive session. And it's about Resolution one fifty two of twenty twenty four. It's a lawsuit that I've addressed the full board as well as the Personnel Committee on on multiple prior occasions. It's John David Smith versus the County of Warren and Warren County Department of Social Services. It's an action that was filed back in August seventeen, on August seventeenth of twenty twenty and is now pending before the Warren County Supreme Court. It's one of the three lawsuits that arose after the New York State Legislature enacted the Child Victims Act. And it's a lawsuit from public information that I can provide to the board and the community. The general allegation is that the plaintiff was a foster child in foster care with Warren County and was placed with a Warren County foster parent. That foster parent being Reverend Richard Reynolds, who at the time was a United Methodist Church Minister located and stationed at the United Methodist Church in North Creek. And the allegations of sexual abuse are alleged from nineteen seventy nine to nineteen eighty one. And as is set forth in the public record of documentation, Warren County, through our retention policies, the longest being retaining for thirty years and does not have and did not have any records that have not yet been destroyed concerning this particular placement back in nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty one, when the lawsuit was served on Warren County shortly after August twentieth of twenty twenty. The Resolution one fifty two of twenty twenty four is asking the board to authorize the county attorney to settle all outstanding claims in this lawsuit with this plaintiff for a sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is an amount that would be paid as a material term in equal payments over three years. First payment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars within forty five days upon settlement. And then an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty five, in January of twenty twenty five. And then the final payment in January of twenty twenty six. If there's any members who want to discuss particulars which would require me to convey attorney-client communications, impressions, thoughts, please let me know and we can frame a motion to go into executive session. I can state and will state that it's my legal recommendation as the county attorney that the county proceed to settle this claim for all of the reasons I've previously discussed with this board as well as on multiple meetings with the Personnel Committee.
Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, just to alert the board, the committee that I chair has dealt with this issue for many hours. We pondered, we beat up Larry, we tried to understand everything that was happening. And ultimately, we came to the decision to support this resolution unanimously. So actually, there were a few others that weren't on the committee that participated in some of our executive sessions. It wasn't an easy decision, but it was approved unanimously when we went through the pros and cons of all the different options that we had. And I just want to let you know that we did seriously vet this and it was our recommendation. Thank you.
It's time. Supervisor Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to request the executive session.
We have a motion by Supervisor Diamond. Do we have a second to go into executive session? Supervisor Drossi.
On the question.
And if I could just clarify, it would be under Public Officers Law, Section one oh five, one D for the board to have executive session for the discussion of this current litigation matter, John David Smith versus the County of Warren. That would be the way to frame it for purposes of the open meetings law.
Supervisor Drossi, you had a question.
Yes, I've asked this previously, just for the courtesy of our many guests, and today we do have several people. If we would consider executive sessions at the end of all other town or county business, it, you never know how long the sessions are going to go. We have people waiting who all have to leave and they may be here for other business. So I just ask that for for courtesy in this case, but really in general, if we can consider executive sessions at the end of county business.
Thank you. Do you still second a motion to go in?
Well, no, I was raising my hand to.
Okay. I need a second.
Mr. Chairman, I will. I, you know, in fairness of Supervisor Diamond, you know, for a long time, but as long as we abide by Supervisor Grass's dress's request, the way to go about it.
It is a matter that the board's going to vote on today because it's a resolution before this board. There was a special Personnel Committee meeting on Tuesday to ensure that it could be fully vetted and appear before this board. That's the only reason I'm asking or encouraging the board to consider doing it before they vote.
We have a motion, we have a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, my second was only at the point where we didn't delay this until the rest of the proceedings were done and still giving us an opportunity to vote. That was my second.
What are you saying? We have to, I don't, can you restate that? Because I don't understand.
I appreciate Supervisor Diamond's request for executive session, but I also appreciate what Supervisor Drossi said about delaying this so we can get the public engaged with all their other business. And then before we adjourn, before we end our voting, that's when we go into executive session on this one issue.
Well, we all have to, we're going to have to have an executive session before we vote on resolution. And there is privilege of the floor. We have a motion, we have a second, exposing the meeting, go to complete this executive session. Again, all those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Go into executive session. We'll keep it as quick as we can.